Technology's getting table, they filed an extension. No, no. Where we get started, I just want to call your attention that Lauren Anderson's on Zoom with us. So you can talk into your microphones so he can hear and talk a little bit slower than normal and wait for his response, that'd be great.
Thanks, Jack.
Welcome.
Good morning, good evening, everybody.
Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, Lauren.
It might as well be morning, right?
Walked right into that one.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order with the May 16, 2024 Cecil Township Planning Commission Meeting, and it's 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the April 18th meeting.
I move. I'm sorry, I made that correction. I saw it, Dave had highlighted a section and I made that correction on the public comments section.
Correct.
I move to approve the Cecil Township Planning Commission meeting minutes dated April 18th, 2024.
Before we second the, the meeting minutes, there was one item under new business, I think it should be none, I think it says one. That'd be the only correction that I see.
The version I have here says none.
Okay. Well, then I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Ms. Hamilton, a second from Mr. Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes are approved. Jack, do you have anything for us from a review of previous decisions? I think you emailed something over.
Yeah, last week, right? The Dunn Plan was approved and, I'm sorry, what was the, the Koski Plan was approved by the board.
Good. Okay, all right, we'll be moving on to old business then. Application 2024-0004-275 Technology Park in Edition Site Plan.
I'll make a motion to table said application as they have requested an extension.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is application 2024-0009 Level Up Pickleball Camps Land Development.
Dan, do you have anything on that?
Just the fact that I spoke to the, the engineer that Greg Banner that's going to, is working on the project. So we anticipate them submitting the plans and this will be your next month, the final up.
The last thing I have from Gateway on that is from March 20th, is that?
That's correct.
So they're still addressing the?
Yeah, what happened was the, the guy that took on the job was, they, they hired an engineer, they had an engineering house, that person left them and they've been struggling to find somebody else to pick up the project and address the questions. So they finally have somebody on board and they're going to submit, so I know they're actively working on it.
Are, are they still within their window if we table it for next month?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's no problem.
I think we covered that last month, they were good till June.
Yeah, I think so too, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I got you, them and 275 Technology, I think we're on the same timeline.
I'll make a motion, we table the application.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and the final item in old business, application 2024-0010 Han Farms LLC Consolidation Plan.
I believe there is representation here tonight.
Yeah, so this is a, a simple subdivision where they're actually taking a piece of, another piece of property and adding it to an existing lot. So we had a letter dated May 13th, 2024 with four minor comments, those comments have all been addressed and we have no further comments, so I would just defer to Katrina from Schuffler's office if there's any questions that the planning commission has.
Hello, my name is Katrina Harmel, I'm with Schuffler and Company. Do you have any questions for me? It is a simple consolidation plan.
You had really good communication, thank you for the emails, thank you for letting us know what was going on with the county as well. I don't have any questions.
Nothing.
No questions here.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve application number 2024-0010 Han Farms LLC Consolidation Plan in accordance with the comments made by Gateway Engineers' letter dated May 13th, 2024.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You can leave those with Jack. So this will be on the agenda for the supervisors' meeting in June. And you probably don't need, I wouldn't say that you need to be here, I think we can handle it. Okay, sure.
Okay. There are no items on the agenda for new business, so moving on to ordinances and amendments. The Cecil Township Ordinance 9-2011.
I believe that the planning commission received our solicitor's email saying, you know, giving kind of a timeline. We have nothing new to give to you or to discuss unless Dan has something. Okay.
I think the board's still making their final decisions on what they want to do.
We can absolutely take questions.
When we get that, when we get that.
Is there anything that the members of the commission would like to discuss related to this matter?
I would just say I, I would defer to leaning on what the supervisors have decided so that we can provide the most comprehensive feedback based on that and the extenuating special hearings that have happened so far because of it.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's been a lot going on there in the, in the, in the special hearings. It would be nice to have a little, there's a lot of different directions, law rabbit holes we could go down as, as a planning commission. Doesn't make sense to start diving down every one we see if the order supervisor doesn't see fit to, doesn't have a plan on which one they want to go down themselves.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, I, I would love to have a, an understanding of the expectation that they have for the planning commission, what they'd like us to review, in what timeframe, just so that we can be of best help to the effort here with all the concerns that have been demonstrated at the, at these hearings and to make the best use of, of our time as a, as a commission.
Yeah, and I think we made some good comments the last, in the last meeting or two as well, given, good feedback on what we were being shown at that time. So I think if they're looking for direction from us, I think we've given the feedback that we can give based off what we've been shown so far.
Agreed.
Dave?
Yeah, that's fine.
Barb? Okay.
Are we required to table it at all?
Well.
Or since there's a re discussion?
I don't know that we need to table it, but I, but I know that some of the public is here to comment specifically on this. So I think I'd like to open it up to the floor, to the public at this point in time, in, in this part of the meeting and hear what they have to say.
Good evening, my name's Mike Monaco, I'm in, I live on Rising Road, McDonald. I'm kind of new to the planning concept, so I'm just going to voice some issues that I have. I've, I've attended the hearings and it's really limited in what you can address in this hearing. And I was curious that the last time I was there, the last meeting, the chairman indicated that there was absolute, there was, I think, five drafts that they had been working on progressively. My question to you guys is, have you ever seen any of them? Because the last one I was going to address, they said, "Don't even bother because it's all changed," and that was the last meeting.
I don't, the April 18th version, which is also posted on Cecil Township's website, is the latest iteration that we've received. However, as Jack mentioned, we did receive some communication from the township solicitor saying that there will be continued revisions and they didn't think that there would be revisions available for us to review prior to tonight's meeting. So we've not received anything new to review, which is essentially why we're saying there's nothing more that we can really discuss if we don't know what else is being put in front of us.
Then maybe I don't understand what, what you guys, what your responsibilities are. But my understanding was that there's been a number of answers to the questions, or actually to the drafts themselves, particularly Range, who's most involved. And I was curious if you've seen those, because they said they've sent them and whether you had any opinion on those contentions that they're making. Because I, I did have some, some review of those and they're pretty contentious and whether the township is being in a position that they're going to have to defend that in a legal action. So my question is, have you seen those or the answers? And if not, are you going to see them? Is that part of your responsibility?
That would be something that I would ask the solicitor, as far as why we have or have not seen them or the supervisors. If that communication's been sent to the township, whether or not we see it is not, we, we aren't mind readers, so we don't know.
Maybe my quest?
Was there something in?
I believe we did receive previous Range comments, yes.
From the March meeting, the first?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
This is pretty, this is pretty current.
So I, I, it's prob, do you just have some comments? He could, Mike could let us know what's on his mind, right?
Right.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Oh, tell us what's on your mind or what, any particular comments?
They, I've been a taxpayer and a citizen in Cecil for a long time. This is the only time I've experienced how they addressed this hearing. There was no workshop, there's no question and answer period. There's supposed to be questions that were directed to the township and then they were supposed to be answered and that's what drove the drafts that are being draft, drafted. So I'm actually in a point that I'm arguing the whole, the whole process that they're going through because I don't think it's been very transparent. We haven't even gotten to the, the question of what's in the drafts because they seem to be a moving target. And so I'm, I guess, in, in your experience, when are they going to give you something to look? Do you have any input prior to them giving you a final draft, I guess is the question?
Well, I'll answer that, I think they, they have certainly asked us for our feedback and I think the last, the last meeting for sure and the meeting before that, that we all gave, you know, feedback on a number of the plans that we'd seen and I think.
Well, one of the?
We, we gave feedback, we gave, well, on, on some of the previous drafts and, and I'd like to think that some of the changes that are occurring are as a result of some of the feedback that we've given along the way. I mean, we are an advisory board, so we don't have any authority to make decisions. We have, we're in a position to, to review and to, and to advise. And that's, so we've been given, we were given some preliminary drafts, we reviewed them and we gave feedback on those. And then they made some revisions and we saw them, what, the day of the last meeting, right? I think we got them emailed to us, Lauren, I think I recall it was?
Five hours.
Five hours, right?
Five, five hours.
And Gretchen, Gretchen Moore, the solicitor, was very kind in articulating right off at the beginning of the meeting at, at the beginning of the discussion of the ordinance, that she didn't expect us to be able to provide thorough comments when we had just received a draft that afternoon.
I'm curious if that draft was the newest one that limited 99% of the property against drilling.
I believe that it's, it's the one that's posted on the Cecil Township website, so yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we've given feedback and I think that's where we're at right now as a, as a board before you came up is, I, I think we're on, you know, we could sit here and talk tonight about our opinions of where we think the, it should go, but I don't have anything new to say that I didn't already say.
Yeah, we're in a holding pattern until we see the next draft.
Right, when we get a draft placed in front of us that, that this, where it's indicated to us, this is the direction we want to go, can you look at this and, and let us know what you think as, as an advisory board, then we can review that document at that time and give feedback.
And I appreciate your, your, your position because that's kind of, to tell you the truth, I really am having a hard time struggling with what you, even you want to address in the ordinance because I can't get by the, the way they're doing this. And it's, it's limiting in our input except for selected individuals. And I'll be more direct, did you, did you have, did they provide the sound study that was given?
It's on the website, yeah, yes.
So you guys addressed that?
We have looked at it, I, I've looked at it.
I looked at it.
Yeah, I've, I've looked at it.
And Lauren looked at it, yeah.
My, my only comment on that was, and this was told by the chairman of the board, that that was given, that, that was contracted to address sound coming from two wells due to a complaint. If you read that and it's entirely, there's one sentence that basically says Range has complied, whatever that means, okay? The, the entire first page of the introduction addresses what the ordinance should be. The conclusion addresses four or five different ordinances that are, that they should be applied. And my point being, it wasn't really a, a, a sound study, I think it was a hit piece to get in front because there was no opportunity to question them, him, that's one guy. So I was, I just want to voice that because there is, I think, some serious problems with how they approached that. If they wanted to approach it as a, a professional, then they should have did that and allowed the, the proper cross-examined, but at least challenge how they addressed it because nowhere in that report did they find fault with anything that Range was doing. So therefore, it was really a piece that was made to, to support an ordinance that they're trying to draft now. And this is in February, this is before this is really under investigation per se. So my issue again is, I, I just don't like the whole procedure, let alone what they're trying to do and whether that's being used to influence anything that you guys might do, so I'm kind of challenging that.
I believe there were some workshops a few years ago though, but it, it was.
There's always been workshops.
Yes, there's always.
There's always been an answer, a question and answer and that, and I addressed that. And was rudely told by Mr. Casiola that he had 28 years and he'd never seen one, which, I've been here my entire life, I know that for a fact. But that, that's irregardless, all I'm trying to say is, there's some issues here and I think they're, that are preemptive attacks based on where they think they want to be, but to this day, I don't, except for this last one, is every time a draft is done, it's more restrictive to the point it's 99%. And, not that I'm a genius, but there's some significant issues being addressed if this goes forward against Cecil Township. I mean, this is, there, there, you, you should investigate whether this is going to be, is going to escape the local judicial system. I mean, you're, you're looking, they're, they're talking about going federal, these are significant costs that I think the township needs to, to evaluate. At least know, if you want to go that direction, but it'd be nice to know.
We have, Lauren specifically, as well, and we have all agreed that there are certain things in the ordinance that are very clearly in state and federal mandates and statutes and that we need to?
Well, and one, and a couple more things and then I'll let you rest. The, the, the existing ordinance, in my understanding, has never been really applied. Every, every permit that was given, there's always been a number of, of conditions applied to each one. So it's really, that ordinance has been modified and agreed to by Range and their operating procedures and, and compliance. And my question, now wish you was here, the attorney, is, let's say that they, you were to go to court for the new ordinance and let's assume that you lose, whether they can go back and say, well, you know, the existing ordinance has never really been applied the way it was designed and whether they can go back and you're actually taking a step backwards in that condition.
Yeah, so, I mean, as I recall, there, there was a, there was another attempt at a, a previous ordinance that was, that included a number of those things that are, that, that got challenged in court and lost there. So then they came back with the conditional approvals and so each, so they negotiated out on, on each one of those. And again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I'm not, I'm not.
Me neither, but I'm just.
Acting in that capacity here, I'm just trying to recall from, you know, what I've seen at firm meetings.
From Range as an operating procedure that they agreed to, which was not in the ordinance and they did not have to comply.
Sure, well, once they agree to comply to it, then they're bound to it at that point, but.
It's changed from location to location, which, again, I think can be challenged because it's not consistent. And that's a problem I see with the, the new ordinance that they published. It, it's actually asking for parameters that need to be evaluated before you can even decide what you want to do. That strikes to a number of legal issues going forward.
Yeah, and I, and I think the last two meetings, I think us as a planning commission, we, we pointed that out pretty directly that, that the, the drafts of the ordinance that we've seen have in many of the areas that they are attempting to add to contradict state and federal regulations and our recommendation would be that this could expose the township to further legal action from other companies, not just Range, that would like to come in and develop or residents that have mineral rights that would like to develop them in specific areas that, that are allowable, that could be developed. And so I think we've been pretty forthright in the comments that we've submitted to the, to the board on the versions of the ordinance that, that some of those areas of the new ordinance should be redacted or, or limited to what is already currently in state and federal regulations. So you limit the township's exposure to any future litigation.
And I think I also, I think I also added on to that as well, that there's a, there's a very distinct difference between contradicting and, and going above and beyond and there's, there's plenty of precedent out there for, you know, federal law and, and standards and regulations to set one bar and then for states and counties and other local authorities, authorities having jurisdiction so and so forth, being able to go above and beyond that.
Yeah, so, so long as it doesn't limit the ability to safely develop the, the resource in appropriate areas and I think Range has gone above and beyond in their, in the conditions that they've accepted during those conditional use approvals because, you know, that's what they determined was the best course of action to proceed with, with the township in an agreement when those permits were approved. So, so that obviously is up to them, but, you know, that may not work for every operator that comes in, which is why you have an ordinance which sets the baseline and the conditional use approval hearings would establish other conditions that an operator may or may not to, agree to during that, that course of the approval.
And just to follow up on that, I actually made a call to, to the state concerned, Title 58, I believe it is that covers this, and, and Act 13. And it clearly states unless there's some other conditions in the township that allow that setback to be larger. And, and I'm not sure that exists in the township, so again, when I address that, I don't, I don't get a good answer other than we can do it. And again, I think that should be challenged.
Set, set, setbacks at the local level are a very slippery slope. You're absolutely right that at the state level, they, the, the state governs setbacks from streams, wetlands and other resources. They also, you could make the argument, and again, I'm not an attorney, I'm an engineer, you know, who specializes in permitting, but the state can also set setbacks for structures, occupied structures as well, which is what they've done with the 500-foot current setback for oil and gas operations within Act 13 that they determined to be a safe, safe distance away from operations that we're talking about.
And just to go one step further, but I guess it's a moot, moot point now, when they were addressing the 1,000-foot setback, one of the questions I had, and maybe you guys should consider that, if they're, if they're going to go back to this, this new one is kind of off the wall. But anyways, the 1,000-foot setback, my first question would be, if you were to do that, can you build any residential structures within that, that space?
In the current ordinance, I believe there is wording that says that if oil and gas, if there is an approval and that new structures, residential structures or occupied structures come into play, that the setbacks would have to be complied with at that point.
So at that point, they've not only limited for?
I could, I could be wrong, is that, that's my understanding of it, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I understand. Within the setback and landowner decide that it's just, you want to say? You could accept it as the landowner, okay, and that, that's the conversation.
But that's a, that's clear.
And I think it's also, I think it's also that you cannot initiate the oil and gas operations unless you're, unless you honor those setbacks. But that does not stop somebody from saying, after the operations have begun, saying, "I want to build a house 500 feet from the setback." They totally can do that, they can, that's, that happens in a lot of our ordinances, a lot of our setbacks that we have where someone can then say, "I want to build within that setback area," once that operation has begun. That doesn't stop the operation, it can stop future operations, but it won't stop that current approved and permitted operation.
I mean, that's kind of what I had, unfortunate. Unfortunately, I'm not getting very much success in addressing my questions and answers with the board, and they keep coming up with new drafts. And I'd like to address the drafts, what they're trying to do to see if it's within reason and can be accomplished, but that seems to be a moving point. I really...
It is. It is a moving target.
I really pity you guys for trying to address this on the run.
It is. It's very difficult. It's a moving target. And that's essentially why we've said, because there's nothing new for us to review. There's not...
But I find that hard to believe if they're putting it on, they're... How do I say this? They're manipulating the whole process to put in procedure or recommendations that are extremely restrictive to, in violation, well, not bad word, contrast to what the current title is recommended. And I guess you guys, I'm trying to get my head around what you guys do. I mean, you're going to approve, you're going to either approve or not the final? Or do you have any input at all on how to get here?
Again, we have input, but we're a recommending body. So, even when somebody comes to us with a consolidation plan, we can make the recommendation to not approve for reasons X, Y, and Z. It can then go before the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors will say, "We hear what you say, but, you know, we think that this should be approved." And they can, they can go against our recommendations.
But I would think your weight is pretty heavy.
We can approve, we can recommend or approve things, we can recommend to not approve things. And the Board of Supervisors can heed our recommendations, or they can make their own decisions. And even then, we can make recommendations in this meeting, and things can change in just the two to three weeks before the Board of Supervisors meeting, where the entire scenario is now different. So we can say, "We recommend this isn't approved," and the new information... Or we say, "We recommend to approve, new information comes to light, and the Board of Supervisors says, 'Nope, we're not approving that, and here's why.'" So we're a recommending body. They want us to give feedback on this ordinance.
But you only give feedback at the end. You don't give it... We can't address, you don't publish it anywhere?
We give feedback in our meetings.
In our meetings.
Yes.
But there's nothing on the website.
If there's something presented to us, like right now, we have nothing to review.
How about the prior meetings? Do you have that published anywhere on your feedback?
The videos are posted on the township website. And you can feel free to go back and look those over and hear the comments.
Yeah, and we have the meeting minutes, and I think last month's minutes do address the... We were looking for an explanation on the sound levels, the DBA versus the DBC. So there was discussion about the, this sound study.
I'm going to beat that up, because that's one of my issues with the supposedly expert. He wasn't there to give that opinion. So if that's what his opinion was, it should have been able to be at least challenged. And they won't, it's not, I can't. They won't give me the avenue to do that. So, those, those conditions that he had, and I've talked to some experts in the field, said that that one provision really is not measured appropriately anywhere near us. So, they're looking for state of the, it's not even state of the art, it's new. And damn near not measurable. So how do you address that? Did they tell you that? You know, that's what I'm trying to get at. Was it disclosed to you or just disclosed in that report?
I think that was one of our, one of our questions. We're waiting for more feedback from, from the expert.
Or from the supervisors, because we don't want to make a recommendation on something that we don't understand.
Exactly. We needed more information ourselves.
And Jack, the next draft will be, there will be a public hearing to discuss the next draft.
There is a hearing on June 5th.
Okay.
Have you been to one of those hearings?
I have not.
Okay, you get three minutes to talk. And so there's no question and answer. So at the end of the day, all I'm telling you is, you've got to investigate what they're giving you, because I think it's biased and manipulative.
And then that hearing, there won't be any comments by the Planning Commission, because we haven't had anything in front of us. So this hearing will go on without any input, any new input from Planning Commission.
Yeah, we won't have another meeting before then, so.
We'll have the meeting before July, in which they plan on voting on that at that time.
Correct.
Planning Commission will need July 1st, the last meeting, which they are planning, according to a post on several places today, they are planning to press the ordinance at the July 1st deal.
Is there any other public comment?
While we're waiting, can I just put everything into perspective? With respect to videotaping, I do videotape all the meetings except the Historical Society in this room. I post all those meetings on our website. I post the agendas for all the meetings on our website. It's right next to the TV that you can click to actually view that month's video. We are obligated to put the Board of Supervisors' minutes out there each month. And as you know, the current meeting, they vote on the prior month's minutes and adopt them, and it's then that I put them out there. So yeah, there's a month's delay between the meeting and the minutes. We are not obligated to put them out, put the minutes out for any of the committee and boards other than the BOS. So that's why you're not going to see those out there. Now, proper procedure is right to know. It's a very easy form to fill out, go through the procedures. And, you know, if you request, you know, a set amount of minutes or documents or something like that, it goes through our right-to-know officer, Mr. Don Januso. And we have limited time to get it to you. So, right-to-know forms are very easy to find. Just type in "right-to-know." It's a state form. We accept them, easy to fill out. What I would suggest is just be specific on what you're asking for.
Thank you, Jack. As for the commission, I do believe that we should make a motion if we're going to table this. That's what we've done in previous months, so I think we should continue that. If we're not going to make a motion to approve or to recommend for not approval, then we should make a motion to table.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to table in hopes that we will have revisions to provide additional feedback.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to table in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask, that was a motion to table the discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Until we have something to reveal.
Next item on the agenda is discussion. Any, any other items anybody would like to discuss? Then, do we have a motion to adjourn? That'd be a no. Come on down, Bruce.
Bruce, yes. 59 Coleman Road. So you will have a meeting before they have another one of their hearings?
No.
You won't. So we're not going to know what you guys...
No, they'll have the, they'll have their hearing on June 5th. Then we will have a, our next meeting in... Third Thursday in June. And then the Board of Supervisors, from what has been, from what I'm hearing, from what I think many of us are hearing, are planning to take action at the July Board of Supervisors' meeting. So that'll, so there'll be opportunity for us to see what's, comes out of that June 5th hearing.
Okay.
Am I using the right word there? Hearing, out of that June 5th hearing, give feedback on it before the Board of Supervisors takes action on it in July.
So if anything is presented to you at the hearing, the next hearing, we'll have no, we'll have no input prior to that to make any comments on it?
Well, my other question was, when they brought these other drafts to you guys, I mean, I don't know if you can answer, if you might not want to answer, because it's a moot point now, because like you say, they keep changing on you. But could you tell me, if you guys were in favor of the 1,500-foot setback? I mean, could you tell me? I mean, I don't watch the internet, so. Somebody tell me something.
I think there's, I think there's a variety of, I mean, there's five people on this commission. So I think there's five, five different opinions on it. And honestly, I think it's, there was a lot more questions than opinions that, whenever we last reviewed it. I mean, we all wanted to know, Lauren made some great points about, you know, some of the items in that ordinance were, seemed like they'd been defined by whoever wrote the ordinance. Whenever there's existing established definitions, industry definitions, definitions that have been established by federal agencies and state agencies, that would be more appropriate for us to use in those situations. I thought that was some, I thought it was a great comment by Lauren, and it helps define, you know, words matter, right? So being able to define what we mean when we say that's important. So using established definitions is a big step to that.
The solicitor.
The solicitor. So she's basically running the township.
She's, she's writing the ordinance at the direction of the supervisors.
Correct.
Well, you know what I mean, but, I mean, we all know, I mean, we go to these meetings. But I don't, I don't understand where they come from. But okay.
So your question about like setbacks, we've only been able to review the, so far, maps that were provided to us. You said like 500. We haven't even seen a map with like 500-foot setbacks or 750-foot setbacks. We've only seen what they've posted so far. Now, whether anything else comes out, I don't know. I guess we'll just wait and see what the supervisors provide us with to review.
You know, they're talking, like you guys says, if they would have took, I guess, your recommendation last time, there's going to be 1% of the township able to put wells up. I mean, doesn't that kind of, kind of sound like a not a good deal?
It certainly would, would present a problem to the township for those that have their own mineral rights to be able to develop them and work with operators that can do that, certainly. Yeah, anytime that you are 99% restrictive on any activity within a township, you expose yourself to litigation, potentially.
And that's where, I mean, you guys can't say, but I think we're all, everybody here knows that's where we're going to end up again.
And we're saying 99%. Everybody's using this term 99%, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding isn't that it's actually 99% and it's just a very large majority of the township is unable to be developed for mineral rights, correct?
Well, I'm just using what they told us at that workshop, 1%. Only 1% is going to be available to put wells.
Okay.
I believe that's the 1,500-foot setback.
The, from May 6th, the one that said proposed well sites? It's okay. I think that's what he's referring to, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, if you look at that, because they listed the acreage that was excluded in this one.
This is the important part to me, is there, obviously, there's a lot of revisions going along. There's a lot of ideas floating out there, you know. This is the important part, and I appreciate you coming down, Mike. I appreciate you coming up here and speaking, Bruce, because we need feedback from the residents. You know, you have a Board of Supervisors, it's five people. You know, they have a solicitor who has a job to do to give as good of legal advice as they can, but they're, they're one attorney and there's, you know, thousands, tens of thousands of, you know, how many attorneys? I don't know, right? We're a commission of five people. We're trying to represent the people, but we need, we need feedback. So I know some, a lot of people will, you know, see a proposed, see a lot of different proposed things, and again, upset. Me personally, I'm not upset. I like seeing all the different plans. We asked for maps to go along with each of those plans so we could actually see how it impacts. And I like hearing back from everybody saying, you know, "This is what, this is what I think of this plan. This is what I think of this plan." You know, it's not a horrible thing to have 15 plans in front of you and say, "You know what? I like this out of this plan, I like this out of this plan, like this out of this plan. When I read these three plans, I got a new idea. Let's put it all together. Let's come up with something that works for everybody." You know, I think that's really where the Board of, you know, I can't speak for the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to think that's where our representatives' mindset is. I know that's where my mindset is when I'm up here. Again, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the commission, but I feel that everybody feels the same way as me on that. But, so I think it's great that you're down here and giving us feedback. I really do.
Well, I do agree with you that this latest map appears more subjective than objective. So if you have a specific setback, 1,000 feet or 500 feet or whatever it might be, if you have a specific setback, that's more of an objective standard as opposed to a subjective standard.
Only thing I want to, on that overlay map, I'm sorry. On that overlay map they put out, have you ever been to a well site? The well pad itself, I think it was four acres? But they're showing an imprint on that overview of 10, 11 acres. So, what they did when they bused these people in the last meeting was got them scared that that well's going to be right there. Now, that's a pretty big difference. So you have to take that into consideration. That imprint of that well pad is only four acres. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I guess I have an issue with the process also, but probably a different one. Jason, I hear you say that you want... Kelly started it. Sorry. Jason, I hear you say you want people's input. That leads me to believe that you don't think it's your responsibility to come to the hearings. to come to the hearings and watch the, or watch the videos of the hearings, because it was three hours of residents' input. And so.
Those were about three hours, yes.
So I don't understand why you feel you need to get that input at this meeting.
Well, so, I shut my mic off. So at the, as, as Mike pointed out, at, at those, at those hearings, every, you were afforded three minutes. And I don't think, Mike, you said, no questions. And that's, that's what we saw when we watched the videos ourselves. So we get to hear people's comments, but there's, there, there's no back and forth. So this is a different forum. Obviously, it's, it's not a packed room, there's less people here. So, you know, Mike's able to get up and, and, and speak his mind for a lot longer than three minutes. He's able to have some back and forth. You know, I, I think there's value in that, just like we're having now. You know, a little bit of back and forth conversation. You know, I can watch those videos and I can see people's, different people's opinions, but, but this is a different forum. And being able to have people come here and, and, and hear what they have to say, and me being able to ask some questions and, and have a back and forth with them, as opposed to just seeing what their three minutes were to the Board of Supervisors in a hearing, it's, it's, it's a different, it's, it's gonna be different information for us to work.
Okay, well, then.
We do, we do take the time to watch those and to hear the input that residents and non-residents and provided experts are giving.
Okay, so then, to get more participation in these meetings from the residents to give you feedback, I think people don't know that this is an opportunity to provide that input to you.
I would agree with you on that. I, I, I think there's a lot of people that don't know how their local government works, that don't know, understand all the levels and all the layers that, that go along with it. So I.
Or even if this planning board exists. I mean, I'm relatively new to all of this also, so.
Although we do post the agenda, correct?
Yeah.
It's on the calendar.
Yeah.
There are monthly meetings, the agenda's out there. During the hearings, there, there is an email address for people to send their comments. You know, I don't know what else I can do. Actually, during the hearing themselves, when I'm streaming it live, I have the chat box open for anybody watching it to ask a question. I'll, I'll relate it, I'll talk to you.
Mm-hmm. Brother, brother. Scott.
I spoke with her brother, you know, he was asking, it's back and forth. It wasn't a long conversation, but I'm there, that's why I have my eye front of my hand all the time. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not the best, but it's the best that we've got right now.
Okay. Well, I, I will share that information as much as I can with people that they should be coming to this meeting.
And I appreciate, Kelly and, I'm sorry, what's your name? Linda, I appreciate how engaged you've both been.
I just forgot what I was gonna say.
You were saying, we can now adjourn?
No. Just so you know, this is the map that's up. It was, I put it up last week, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday. Just so you'll know, if you wanna see where, you know, everything is going to be. No, we don't wanna list with Ross. Here's the main page. Mega menu, all you have to do is hover over Government, come down, Proposed Ordinances, 2024. Here's the Oil and Gas Ordinances. And actually, I put the dates on here. So I will have June 5th, 6:00 PM for the next hearing. And I have Karen Drive Ordinance to be determined. But here's everything that we have. Here's the original ordinances that were being considered. Potential well pad, that's the thousand feet, I believe. It says right there, up in the corner, a thousand, at least a thousand feet. Here's 1,500 feet. I believe this is the one Bruce was talking about. And then here's the latest. And that's the one I was showing. So that's all on the website. And it's, it's Adobe, you can enlarge it, just use the magnifying glass, you can zoom in on it. Not all the streets are on here, and that's what kinda hung us up last time a little bit. But, you know, for the most part, th- these are the most current maps that we have right now.
And this one I, I like and I appreciate. Dan, I'm not sure if you did this or somebody else, but it, it's showing setbacks from each highlighted area to Hills Henderson Elementary or where 79 is located. So it's showing those setbacks in between, like where 79 is right there. There's a proposed, yeah, where you're zooming in on. It's showing 1,072 feet from residents.
Yeah, elementary school's up top.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's one of the things about this, is see, see the 1,072 right there? You can see the arrow? Can you zoom in a little bit more? And there's your 1,072.
So thank you for clarifying that for us.
Great math.
Thank you, Dan.
I think I, the other thing that I've never seen on one of these maps is the, the surface hole and the bottom hole locations. That's not been on the maps before either, right for the existing wells. Yeah, that, that's, that's fascinating to be able to see. Yeah. And so, and that's, and, and that kinda brings up an interesting point as well, because, you know, the, the idea that you can only put a well on, you know, 1% or 10% of the land doesn't mean that we can only access the gas under 1% and 10% of the land. These laterals can, you know, go a long way. And so.
Jason.
Yeah.
That, that, you, you would have to have the, the rights of the, the property be severed to be able to do that. So, so somebody, if somebody owns both the surface and the subsurface rights of what, of, of going horizontal like that, it'd be okay. But you couldn't do that if you didn't have, you know, if you weren't working with somebody that had both, both sets of rights. And I guess what I'm trying to say is that, yeah, while you can go four miles horizontally with a well bore, all of the property owners would have to agree, or you'd have to sign up with a lease for, to be able to do that underneath their property, as well as on the surface of their property, if that makes sense.
The, to have the, to have the lateral go under their property, they, they have to.
You have, the lease agreement.
The lease agreement has to be for both subsurface and surface minerals.
If they're different, if they're different, yes.
If, if the drilling rig is, is on the surface, but what if you're two miles away and, you know, they're going underneath your property? Does that apply there too?
Yeah, you'd have to have some sort of an agreement in place, correct?
An agreement. I mean, but it, it would be a lease that talks about going under your property, not on top of. Yeah.
Right, right. Which is how that's, which is how the process works.
Right.
Yeah.
It's how it's worked from the beginning.
Your two minds going at the same time, I lost track of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, and that's kinda where, that's, because I kinda hit, had a hiccup there when you said that, Lauren. I was like, wait, but that's how this has been working from the, from the word go.
Right.
So.
Right.
Okay. Is it? Sure. If you just give your name for the record.
Can you hear me? I'm kinda short. My name's Debbie Augustine, and my husband is George Augustine. So the Augustine well pad is on our property. And I just wanted to say one thing that I think a number of us are concerned about is what about our rights as leaseholders? And the number of leaseholders who are in the township who benefit, you know, from the wells. And another thing that concerns us is we own large amounts of property. We have 100 acres on our farm. I know Bruce has a lot, Mike has a lot. Like, what about property owners? And, you know, our farm, it's been in our name since 1870. I mean, we've lived here a long time. So we just want you to take that into consideration, that that's a big deal for us, you know? So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Is there anybody else? Anybody on the commission?
Dan.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second the motion.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, 7:58.
Thank you guys for letting me join virtually.
Thank you for joining.
It was kinda scary.
Have a good night.
It was kinda scary having you up on the screen behind us like that.
Yeah, I, I did, it's a mic hovering with my gravelly.
It felt very awesome.
Thank you for not sharing your cold.
Nobody wants colds. You guys stay healthy, be well, have a good weekend.
Yes, hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Thanks.